I am on January 7th, 2020, and I'm calling the Story County Board of Supervisors. And if you would like to, please join us for what we're doing. I'm Dr. Brenda Brink, of the United States of America, and through the Republican Party, from the United States of America, one nation, one empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First we have on the agenda is the adoption of today's agenda. Is there a rule in the agenda? I would say we will prove the last two seconds. Second. Wilson, I, Dennis, I, Burke, and I, agenda approved. Next, we have comment number one. This is a comment created for the quality of restaurants on today's agenda. And we have two people who would like to comment on question 20-53. The first one is Brenda Brink. Morning Brenda.
My name is Brenda Brink, I'm 295, I'm 4 years old, I was 69 in Huxley. And I'm here to speak about the proposed resolution which is to urge the Iowa Utilities Board to not waive the right to a public hearing. This is actually not a right, but it's a rule from the Iowa Utilities Board regarding the doubling of oil through the Dakota Access Pipeline. And so I'm gonna read some of what I had already submitted to them, just to kind of sense the stage. But I am a resident of Story County, who lives approximately two miles from the Dakota Access Pipeline, and I object to the company's lawyers asserting that the folks in Iowa do not have a reason to object. An idea that doubling the amount of oil in this pipeline would not pose a risk, not be a substantially greater burden when spills occur, and that landowners don't care is not even common sense, especially since the pipeline was not sold with this amount of oil being transferred. It is only reasonable and prudent that we do care. It is not just landowners who would be affected by a spill. It's local folks like me, and also local county first responders, and other emergency personnel. And when it comes to oil and air, it doesn't stay in a pipeline and it doesn't stay in one spot. So as we look, the neighbors to the north of us, we're putting in the word tiling, this passball, after the crouch, we're up. We have got so much tiling in Iowa, the oil will not stay there if it spills. And the idea that it's not going to spill is ludicrous, there have been so many spills of oil from pipelines, including this very pipeline. So when the oil spills, which it will, the pressure from doubling the oil will spread that even farther and spread that amount in catastrophic ways. And I don't think people realize that it's not just oil in there. There are proprietary substances that they put in the oil, like benzene, which is a premium carcinogen. So this is a big concern to me, and the public needs to have the ability to weigh in. They should not be, the company's lawyers for the Dakota Access Pipeline want to waive the rule that says there should be a public hearing, and that is wrong. So I'm so glad that we've got this resolution, which is Resolution Number 20-53, request to set a hearing on the proposed operating capacity increase of the Dakota Access Pipeline. Thank you.
Kimberly Stevens.
Good morning, I'm Kimberly Stevens, from 65207 Indian Creek Trail, here in Nevada. I also want to put my support in for this resolution. I was not involved in the DPL fight years ago, and you know, kids and other things going on. But it is of great concern that any of these pipelines that we were promised would never have oil spills, had oil spills pretty routinely, and we have to believe that the public should be allowed to weigh in on any increase in oil capacity. So Kimberly, thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who hasn't pulled a comment in on this, or any other topic on the agenda yet? And I'll close up our comment session, and we'll go on to agency reports we've had on. We also have an extra one, it's consideration of minutes, we don't have any minutes to review today. Consideration of personal actions, we have consideration of claims. The number of the agenda.
Number one.
Thank you. Number of the agenda. Consideration of claims. Do you have a claim to motion to approve claims as presented?
Uh, second.
Evans, I, Wilson, I, Burke, and I, claims are approved. Next is the consent agenda. Does anybody want to make a comment on the consent agenda?
I, I know that we approved the consent agenda, ask for second. Second motion.
Wilson, I, Burke, and I, consent agenda items are approved. So we will go ahead now, there are no current items, we are at additional items. Number one, now we are at Resolution 20.53 to the Iowa Utilities Board, as we had some other comments about, are there any further discussion?
I think the only thing I'd love to say is that I've heard folks, because we're counted at a contact meetings, that they've been, not frustrated with the conversation, if they think, like, Apple was hearing comments, that it was to be heard. Some are very concerned, and some are very concerned with the increase in capacity, and what it has on insurance, and parts to, potential impact, that it may have, questions, just some reasoning, some of the reasoning.
And I've heard, I've heard from people, so I also just wanna emphasize that I don't think it's any big surprise that people know that I'm all of transparency and public input. And so with the doubling of the capacity here, I think there definitely needs to be public input, and I also put it through the attorney of the, from the pipeline, that they've got a free pass, without any kind of public hearing, so.
And I've heard from people as well, and I have been following the comments that have been submitted. Sierra Cloud has objected, most recent one I saw in the group was the Office of Consumer Advocate, which is a vision of the US Department of Justice, objected to requests as well. And.
I think the NAPLs are supposed to be.
Yes, thank you. And so that's why I submitted the resolution for today, so. I am also very much for it, I think we have in Story County, we have this whole pumping pump station in the state, and that's double capacity, I think there's been increased concern about that pumping station we have down by Cambridge, so I believe that Story County residents and all other residents need to be able to weigh in in the meantime. So I entertain motion.
I'm with Resolution 20-53, I second.
Any further discussion? Evans?
I.
Wilson?
I.
Resolution is approved. Thank you for the people who came to the table.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Resolution 200.50, CNS Carnes Residential Partial Subdivision, Marcus and Jared from Maury.
Good morning Board, the review is the residential parcel subdivision for CNS Carnes. This property is located in Indian Creek Township, Section 19, township A2 Range 22. The current parcel number is 15-19-300, National 105. The districts, that parcel currently falls underneath A1, the agricultural district, Collins, Maxwell, Little District, Master Fire, Sir County Sheriff, Sir Big Inglis, Indian Creek Watership, Citizens, Energy, and Indian Creek, Dr. H. Sixty-six. So the location is where that yellow star is. That's my equal distance between Cape Bridge and Maxwell. So between the departments, the residential parcel subdivision, must be completely within A1 district, it is, lots created are, need an exception to the 35 acre development in A1 district, and the going on the subject property was constructed in 1976, is located approximately four feet south of 315th Street Runway, and 545 feet east of 620th. Here's the proposed subdivision, lot one, which is on the western side of the parcel, is supposed to be 2.6 point net acres, would be considered eligible for a dwelling. There's an existing driveway, lot two, there's an easement that they have granted for that, and will discuss how to change for their own future. Proposed lot two is a 3.5 net acre lot, with days of state to 700, and lot A, outlot A, is 1.8 acres, and would not be considered eligible. So the land used for the property is a cultural conservation area by the Capsule, or Capsule Capsule, here's the plan. This unit property currently has approximately three acres of ground production, which will allow, it's not my half lives, that portion there. It's surrounded by land use, it's completely surrounded by A1, no parcels that have twines on them are to most of this actual parcel. They're made during the quarter quarters separated from the subject property, use in real product production, south of this, and there's 17 parcels within a quarter mile of the subject property, all of those received notification. So looking north from, on 315th Street, from lot one and two, on 315th, south towards the proposed lots, the existing lot, which would be lot two, to the east there.
Okay, my question is, is that picture, so you've got that, so the lot two, where we're seeing the, the land, there is only other side from the, the house?
Lot two begins at the, the closest access to the house, and then lot one is closer to us, and that's it.
So, so the picture here is lot one?
Yes, right there is lot one, and the distance is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Lot two, leading onto what will become lot one, from 315th Street, and this is from lot two, moving northwest, and there's an eastern edge of lot two, what we say, east. The regulations, all this has made regulations. There were, like I said, we had some notices on 7272, that are going within that quarter long, and the comments about it from the public. We did speak with the engineer, there are three existing accesses on this parcel right now, so there's discussion about either removing one, or granting the access. With how it is currently set up, there's three accesses like that, the easement is on the northwest corner of lot two. If, and in the future at some point, lot one wanted its own access, in order for that to happen, one of these existing accesses would have to be removed, and that's the engineer and, or something. The amount of health, and comment that proposed lot two takes two ohs, and has a subject permit, the, the, the boundaries, I mean, for lot, if lot two, well, lot one, apologies, there are reports to be developed, and what subjects are permitted through, and they have concerns with this. What's to consider, all departments for residential subdivision, by Section 87.07, but it's hurricane, and, well, regulations are met, were previously applied to the existing lot, attempting to all the parcels within the quarter mile three, which had, we don't know, provided any comments back, have proposed lot one, not add, on our access at this time, which have usually, I think, will be developed. In the future, ever as a brand, is the plan to develop to, to, to. Through the recommendations from the board, with planning, development staff, supporting option, be a capable of resolution, like that should. Any larger questions, or any implications?
Thank you for, like you said, you were very, very forth, thank you. Any questions? No, I'm fine. It's pretty straightforward, most want to do, the mind are new. I think, move, that we approve Resolutions 20-50, the residential partial subdivisions planned, known as the C and S Carnes subdivision, that's number four, and in the case, VO9-19. Any further discussion? Wilson, I, Evans, I, Burke, and I. 200.50 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honor yourself. Enjoy your retirement. Next, we have discussion and consideration, request for the Florida County Board of Supervisors' opinion about a proposed exchange of the name of the swap rate, going from the city of Ames, Story County, and Brink County, Cleveland County, and Hamilton County. We have looked at this before, we discussed it, and gotten, through federal input from residents, I think of Story County, also from tribal and story preservation officers that we reached out to. We have, I have had lots of suggestions, and both, comments both for renaming the creek and not, and we do rename the creek the same. I don't know if I can tally necessarily, but I continually get more people saying, I've done that yet? So I know that people are interested in what's going on, so let's maybe go into some discussion first, before we entertain the motion.
Sure. Yeah, I'm a picker, I've had more folks contacting me that were changing the name than I have veteran towns changing it. Certainly I've had a few come out, and actually, one person who came to visit, physically personally about changing the name, and then after I explained all the history and the reasoning, they kind of felt that we needed, saying, okay, you know, change it, change it. So some of them just don't understand, some of the history part of it, and that it's been tested, this has been, you know, it's been tested, been, so, several times, for changes. Sites hearing from constituents, as you said, from, this entire relationship, I also reached out to some of the guys back from the highway, driver down in Poma, who came back with just some, some other suggestions, I even went to somewhere, asked a position to some names that we had, from around initially, and I want to make sure that there was not any negative communications, this is a big event, and we could use some correct pronunciation, what's the name, should we go, that's what you give away about, as we did for all of these, and that particular location. One thing I have found to explain is that I really kind of thought through some of the tribal folks, that I would give more to plenty of suggestions, you know, this is probably a good recommendation, they certainly provide the recommendation, and they look at that, that's what we kind of, may there is kind of, what we would like to be, and stuff, their opinions to ensure that they're being culturally sensitive.
And the fact, I think, to that point, is that some of the names that did come to forefront as synonyms for Indian female, Indian woman, are multi syllables, pronunciations are different than they look like they're spelled, and so that's of concern if we're gonna do a name change in addition by the Bureau of Geological Names, I think that's the right one.
Or no geographic names.
Oh, thank you. And more no geographic names, they would like it kept very short and simple, one word, if possible. So I appreciated the, some of the people who are the Native and tribal cultural people appreciating that, knowing that, yes. I just would like to make a comment that in parts, this has been sad for me, because of the people who are against the name change, some of the comments that came back, diswearing about language aside, but emails, were also the fact that turns out, we don't know much about, about this community, and what we, especially, I think this area is pretty much a northern European background with our heritage, is that we've not understood how a word that was never a word in the Indian language to begin with, it was an attempt, they believe, by the early, early settlers in the east to pronounce, to find an abbreviated form of a word, and how that has then been twisted and taken on very negative sexual, gender connotation. And so it has been with some bittersweetness, that as we've gone through this process. But I'm glad that we persevered, and I, I do have a couple of the names that I think kind of rise to the surface in my preference, but given that we don't have a standard recognition for the, and the tribal cultural people.
Yeah, I, I would also just have to add, I've read to, several years of minutes, only with geological names, and there are, I think, score three bits in almost every state. What I couldn't define, certainly, you know, it was a channeling of, 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 of every single one, but certainly had, was being changed everywhere. So to me, that is something, certainly, that folks aren't just saying, okay, we're just only, they are changing in other states, that's all.
Thank you, and thank you for doing all of that. I did a quick Wikipedia search, and I found the same thing, but I think you got into that a lot more, to see if, like, what was the trend, what are other jurisdictions doing, and I think that is important for us to think about. What, what I got in terms of feedback, was the person who made the recommendation, has suggested Story Creek, I had almost, nobody, who thought Story Creek was a good idea. First, we've already honored Joseph Stewart, been in Story County, the Story City, and the second thing is, the creek doesn't just go through Story County, you know, so actually in four counties, so, so I think other, other folks wouldn't appreciate us maybe doing that. In general, people said it would be good to think of something that honored Native Americans, which I possibly a tribe that have lived here, and I agree with what Supervisor Wilson said, we need to think about a name that's gonna be easy to pronounce, that if we can find a name that honors Native Americans at the same time, isn't something that most people who live here now will like as that, and requires, you know, huge pronunciation lessons or something, I think probably we need to think of something simple. And the two things that I had heard were the Iowa, I, I W A Y, because that was the first drive that was here, past pretty Story peoples evidently, and then Sauk, S A U K. And Sauk is pretty close to Sac, in the new Sac County, we have Sac City, my personal preference, I think, is probably the Iowa, because I think it's something that people have heard before, and we'll identify that the Iowa drive was here, but I don't think we have to come up with one thing, we might be able to come up with a couple of recommendations, but I did not hear anybody really think of the Story Creek, or many people think of the Story Creek as a good name, given the, given the history of the name of that. So I.
I settled double to three, Iowa, Nekwa, which is a variation, it means our mother, so we're keeping the connotation, but a more positive way of honoring Native American women, and then Sauk, and Sauk because of the ease that's a million, we have, we have saves, so. Those are the three.
Yeah, and I came up with three as well, I actually kind of came up with four, really, I just really liked the, or the connotation of it, but I also recognize that that, you won't feel syllable on, and just the spelling would probably be potentially difficult for people to, to state that, and certainly, you're going to recognize or honor, and be more, like, correct, tribal sensitive, you're insensitive if you're mispronouncing things all the time, so that one unfortunately can interrupt my list. So I too had Iowa, Nanso, and in the Nanso, you have the Iowa, or, or, woman or male that was Tina. How's it spelled?
H I N A. So, I guess there's two questions, one is, our recommendation forms says we have these fundamental options, approving of the code's name, rejecting of the culture's name, taking action is specified below, and rendering a decision without our recommendation. So taking action is specified below, we could say whatever we wanted, could we change the name, here are some options, change the name, here's our one recommendation, or could be anything else.
And I will add to what you said earlier, in the name of Story, Story Creek not being one of those, that is top priority, I did hear back from Hamilton County, I reached out to, I mean, Hamilton County, just to get their feedback, Hamilton County, they did not, at all, like, Story Creek, because they didn't feel like they were just recognizing something that's for Story County, and it was not.
This is actually, it's actually correct, correct. So I do know that they are seriously looking at, to me as well, I think that reasons we have started the motion is seeing what we can afford, and if it's kind of, I don't think we can, we can get to the names, it's, they're the same, the same thing. They have, city, my understanding, they have said, they approved changing the name, but they haven't come up with a specific recommendation.
I did, at the District One Supervisors meeting, one of my handles, who had made it previously, I mean, about the council, came to me and said, look, we're only going to do it with you, that's, you take the lead, and he just flat out said that, so, so yeah, so that's nice, I appreciate that, so. I think, I think we probably do need to nail it down to one or two of the forward and one of the discounts, because Tina, I like to look at, so the decision, a little bit for me, about looking at the names, is right now, we are, we definitely want to remove a drop in stories name for females, okay, maybe on there, but females. So then, do we feel that we need to go to keep it with kind of a feminine context about being what, Tina, or Nekwa, okay? Or should we just go ahead and honor the Native American tribes who are affiliated with our African step? And I decided, for me personally, that it was more important than just to honor them all, you know, and get rid of the female connotation, especially since it was so native, and then even according to the, a local historian, the reason that name was picked was.
And even according to the, a local historian, the reason that name was picked was derogatory. So, so I'd be back to probably Iowaay or Sock.
Yeah, and I agree, I'm going to provide this out to Mr. Goodtrax, this from our previous conversation, and most of the names we generated were, or actually were kind of connected to the female name for Creek. Some of the names we made up was, that's, where I just sought out to ensure that if we wanted to get that route, we were spelling correctly, standing it correctly, and there wasn't anything related that was associated with that. Because I'm a Native American historian, and that's why we're going to have folks in there. But, so I too, I would be fine with either Iowaay or Sock. Just seeing what you want to show.
The benefit, I think, of proposing both is to get a little cooperative buy-in from the other large entities we just discussed, Hamilton County giving them, you know, an opportunity in the way ahead. We can, and for him, so they may, there may be something we hadn't thought of, or someone coming forward that would argue to one of these other jurisdictional bodies, by his own jurisdiction, the geographic governments, that would stand out for them when they go with one name. And we will, that's my reasoning within two. So. My kind of hearing is proposing maybe a motion to recommend to change the name of this or Creek, or to reject the code's name and to consider either Iowaay or Sock. Correct.
Yeah, and I agree with that, Mike, and that was an advocate, the question is the same, that slow the process, potentially stop the process if we don't provide one recommendation. And that I don't know, because you can have everybody, you can provide one, another folks name one, something else in the name, slow that process as well. So.
I thought we were exactly in the same, same line as, and I came back on the side, obviously, of being there more involved. Sure, you're right, we sped along, or maybe instead of re-remotion, that we've sped along we prefer, but also this one has great merit, is how we can word this, when that does stem them and send them in a direction to make development.
Yeah, and they haven't, they're kind of waiting for us. So I would prefer that we give them a little buy-in to it, or more, I guess buy-ins, that one would have, probably, if they want to make the change, I would just hope they're seeing out the process. But since they're not sitting at the table here, they have to give more jurisdiction, gives them a kind of, kind of conversation.
So are you saying, do you have the preference? Do you have the preference, you want us to, or do you want us to? I am saying we're too out left, you know, I am thinking about this. And I found that Sock, you know, my tongue more easily related to the conversion to the Sock. However, I think Iowaay, which is also pretty easy, and sometimes you kind of use that when you're joking around, right, for Iowa, right? But Iowaay, that's historically more accurate. They were the first Native American tribe purely identified with the area. So I would go with Iowaay as that.
Yeah, I think I'm, that would be mine of the one, I would be Iowaay as well, and recognize the other state of Iowa is recognizing the Iowaay, right? It is a bigger factor, trying to make, and I think that's made a little difference there.
So if I want to make a motion. I move that we select the action as specified below, that we recommend that the name Story be rejected, but the name Iowaay be the preferred consideration for us, with Sock as an option. So perhaps for clarification, if we are for renaming the Creek. Yes, sorry, yes. So the motion would be, our take action as specified below is that we support renaming the Creek, but reject the name Story and instead prefer the name Iowaay, with their second preference being Sock.
And I will start with that motion.
So we're going to have a discussion. Do you have the motion, Shelly? And there's no further discussion also. I.
I.
I. We have made our recommendation. I appreciate all the research. I think we all did that collectively. You too, I mean, all the head of area and stuff like that. Well, we did, yeah, we collectively did a lot. I also, which really appreciate you, the tribal historic preservation officers, because we did reach out to about sixty emails and state archaeologists, all of us gave this, and a lot of people responded, the HPOs, and very glad to hear that we're looking at changing it. And basically they're, they had some ideas or options, but they just said, please honor Native Americans. And I think we did a good job of going through that and figuring out the best way to do that. So. You know, the feedback from residents we heard from two, you find something I don't honor, Native Americans. Okay. Thank you. Now, I'll run then to discussion and consideration of county attorney appointment process and timeline. Melissa, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, so ladies on the agenda, there were three different documents attached. Those I, you know, with the different dates, and I took the process that at this point in place, three and a half years ago, updated some of that information and used some other inputs. So I think it makes sense to start with the timeline and get that discussed, and we set before we move on to the requirements, like you want, at least, but there's some middle requirements, so. The timeline that you saw attached to the agenda, it does take into consideration the reservation work of county attorney effective at noon, on February seven, that was information we did not have that last year's meeting. So I did develop a timeline so that you could have the possibility of appointing a county attorney, you needed a helping at reservation. So looking at this, you would take applications for just over two weeks, just I had two and a half weeks. You can review the acquis, name any finalists if you want to name finalists, or if you want to invite everyone for presentation. It has a date in there, want to apply with the publishing of the notice, of your intent to fill that vacancy, and then also presentations prior to February, the afternoon of February seventh, with the county attorney. It's a fairly quick turnaround, but I think it's very, I think it's a plenty of time to consider, all the consent.
And then to go back to Aldi New Jersey Martin's presentation, back from last week also, then, once the notice is published, is that in the fourteen days we have, if the citizens watch primary petition?
My understanding is the day of the appointment.
Whatever's later.
Yeah.
Later's later, thank you.
They have fourteen days for February seventh.
Okay.
Um, thank you to county attorney Reynolds for years, the clarification about when the resignation would be effective, that helped answer our questions. I'd lose five.
The timeline looks fine to me as well. That one should be the special meeting of presentation that should be Tuesday, that sort of.
Or after, I wasn't sure what, or night. I would recommend having a period, I saw it Tuesday.
Right, right.
Board meeting, but I didn't know if you wanted to start the presentations at the end or at the beginning.
I have a public fair that then gives the public an opportunity to either watch, I won't hold, I'm looking at it, it's standing in the back here, but hopefully we get those videotapes recorded, so that if you go online, maybe I went to the, the point being giving members of the public an opportunity to at least contact us if they heard something in a presentation that attracted them, or, you know. So to think of an opportunity to weigh in with us before we go ahead and actually bank the, for example, the government. I don't know, there's the public vote for shift. And I understand that, I do. So, so your point, yes, is if we're recording that, then it doesn't matter. I don't think it does. Okay. If it's there and available, then it's available to anybody regardless of how long it's been working.
And I'm, prior to the time that I announced, we did make that determination, and particular time is to remind you those prior presentations, or I wait so we can get the information out there for most of the time.
Sure.
I, I think if, if it's a notice, I mean, depending on if we have it, they may have to reach work schedules or.
That's where I think begins.
And that one evening, I just did see, right here, we left in our discussion, so.
Historically, we've not had as great of a tendance yet at naming, unless we've had a particularly contentious issue. I'm just trying to do, I'm still with those families. I have no problem with, I just don't make, that doesn't make it available to get more integrated.
So I didn't make the motion, I made a motion to approve the timeline, as presented, with the addition that the special meeting of the board would be anything maybe, very traditionally like.
I'm just, I'll second that. We have a discussion on the timeline. Edens, I, Olson, Patty, I. Okay, that's approved. And where else would you want questions?
Sure. The next thing I think would be, what do we want submitted with an application? We have our, our general application, that is the agency, my question is, that's being asked, it's about the reference question that we used last time. And then there were some additional pieces that, that are on this. You can, you can look at it, we can discuss all of them, we can go down. So we've got the online, on there is a cover letter, that's pretty standard, with any application, references or letters of recognition. Last time we did references that would require the three of you to call those references, if you prefer to have letter of recognition submitted to the application. I have seen that done, I've registered, we've got them as specified, so you don't get to under thirty with each of them.
As long as the references, the applicants tell the references in advance, that there may be many, three phone calls, okay? I, I would be good with calling the references, because you never know what particular thing may be said that would lead to follow-up questions to that reference. And I am assuming that we can ask each reference different follow-up questions, correct?
You can ask their questions. It's very fine. You know, it, it all depends what, what you're wanting to ask, what type of references, like personal, maybe a question. I, I like to specify things as much as possible, to make sure you get what you mean, your wild personal preferences, like, I don't care what you have.
You have a question.
And then I could actually, okay, to their, all the issues.
Do you have no problem with asking different questions?
On references, I mean typically, we, we ask the same questions on our references and follow-up, maybe clarification on that.
I would legally.
I would ask, I would have it, I would have it, a reference sheet with your questions, and then just go through each reference that you're asking. I think that follow-up based on your response.
And we would have had, I, we made a first nomination by Debbie Barnes, that night.
There is going to be a lot of technical, I think, about this timeline. It's like with the letter of recognition, right? Yeah, that's the, we, we got to reach, all the references. And we might not be able to reach, I mean, we have difficulty reaching references, they can be far. So it's completely, I'm not seeing that.
That, that would just be my one concern, about this timeframe, and the three phone calls.
I think, I think you, like, with the last one, I think it would be, they got letter of recognition versus, we'll see if that, are you here with the, most recent one? We, we, we're after the mic, so we'll get a touch on. We asked for, I'm pretty glad there's a recommendation, it's best to like, but that's, we, we also didn't have a regular meeting, and HR weren't directing for our office, so you have some, I think, a lot of, lots that are getting to, so. It's really whatever process is helpful, we can change.
The other option we could do is to want to do some, request, three separate people calling, would be to submit any questions we got to HR, and they can reference Jackson document, right? That, that choice. I will come to the, we're not hiring, we're appointing, and all, we assume, and so I think we need to keep that with us. I find each one of us provided three references, and I'm not able to interview all three of them, okay, in that week's period of time. And, and that could be possible, given the fact also, we're probably getting, going to get references from judges, you know, and that, that would seem to be, if I was a wife or an attorney's position, at least one of my references would be a judge, I would appear before, and they're in court a lot, or whatever. So, so I feel why I'm, as a supervisor is, is to try and reach out to those references and get information. But if I don't make all three, and we start to have our discussion, possibly be worried we can get attached with one, because our schedules are also very busy.
So my question, that would be if we have three references, but whether we're, if we're not able to reach any of their references, you know, but others would be worried if they all, kind of, have the information in regards to them, having someone to write some, or written, recommended, letter of recognition. I, I just think it's good to have that personal conversation, I don't discount that, that would be my only, my only concern, or we say two references and one letter of recognition, probably have.
Mm-hmm.
We also.
Has something, or there will be something written, at least everybody. Question eighteen, so family and street judges can't go discussing qualifications and effectiveness of using attorney. And then the, the application itself answers for three references in general.
We specify posting, because you can put as many, there is, the application type like this, not like the, saying three, five, so we put in a posting.
Okay.
And that would be, I mean, that's one thing, or they, they get posting, if they need to submit, do they list three ones in there? It, it's completely either way, we've done it, and you get about as much information from a letter, letter of recognition, what we call in references, a lot of places won't get much information, but they're available.
I'm wondering if there's any way that we can do something, help deciding what references to check on various applicants, and then somehow coordinating it along the three of us who are not all following the same group. I'm trying to think how that might work, I'm not sure it's a good idea or not, but it seems better to me than, than three calls to surprise you, and come out very available personnel. And.
And as I'm thinking through that process, because I also like Melissa said about maybe we ask for one reference, two, and then one call. So back to now thinking about Lynda here, how do we do that process? We have to have that discussion in a length of a session. So we may not be handing into specifics then. If, if we all said, I'm taking these two references, you were taking that reference because that person, another person already listed that, I mean, assuming you've got, say, three applicants before.
My question is, what are you going to ask in the reference? I mean typically it's dates, quality of work, um, it's pretty standard.
I think that was...
Questions, I mean, are you going to develop questions based on each applicant? Or are you going to...
I, once again, we're not hiring, we're not, we are looking to appoint, and then this person's going to most likely run for office, maybe not, you know? Um, but, so the kind of questions I want to talk to a reference about are, all right, when, let's say it is a judge, because it was a judge this year. All right, and when this person comes into your courtroom and does oral arguments, uh, does the person appear to be able to think on his or her fate, uh, related to what's coming back the, from you, your questions? Um, are those questions thought out? Uh, does this person seem to come in well prepared? I'm very interested myself in wanting to get a feel when you're this person laying out legal arguments, uh, references, both the points that support his or her position and do not support his or her position. I think in my experience, yes, uh-huh, I'm very interested because this person is going to be advising us. And so I have a definite preference about what kind of events I want to see coming forward in the future, as I'm on the score. And, uh, so, and I know that attorneys have different schools of thought about what are obligated to tell their clients, all right, or what should do they feel they should tell their clients? Should they also tell their clients about the Iowa Supreme Court, that doesn't support their position? So, um, that's what I'm interested in. And that's why I want to make it very clear that this is in fact, you know, I mean by hiring, we're not hiring, we're employing, but you still have the liability so if something happens, like, it's still filed, it's still in the process, it's no different than, I think, about the elections.
So, so I would still have, you know, I wouldn't ask each different, a lot of different questions for you, for reference. I mean, you, you could still get a claim, I'm not saying you're going to, I'm just saying as, as, as evenly, you know, process that you can have for all applicants. Now, your questions, I would ask that for all of them.
Right.
I mean, my, my question was, are you going to look at the application and develop certain questions based on that applicant? I would not necessarily do that. I would have questions, reference questions that you're going to ask on each individual or...
So those are questions that you've already got in mind, or have got in mind? We can select those to you and you can put on the phone.
And then you can ask, everybody can ask. I mean, that's, that, I would recognize that it would be pretty consistent, if you want follow-up questions or any clarifications on, on the, on the response you get from a reference. I, I think what you're asking for is, you have the, you know, it is an appointment, you didn't, if there isn't a question that you're asking about for judges?
Mm-hmm.
So, so you can ask the three judges, um, three judges discuss their qualifications. So you can do that outside of the reference check. That's a different question.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I don't know whether to know what judges said was a reference, or if it will be attorneys or supervisors they had, I don't know, um, who they would utilize, so. But I would, I would, if you're really curious about a judge and how they perform in court, I would use that, that some of my question, you know, list three judges and go on to them and, 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 you know. So, but yeah, our process, our reference process is we ask. If we have two people who are in reference check, typically it's just one, we just, we would ask the same questions. And it's just one of those. Because you're going to want to give the same, you know, for quality, you know, if you have some terribly different question, you're going to get some...
Well, no, you're not comparing out, so speaking, you're, you're, you're almost picking the information you want to, please, and, and, as, as, I think we should have a list of, of reference check, uh, reference check, yes. It's another G, uh, just that.
And I assume you're going to, you're not going to want to have like, twenty-two questions? We just like have three or five questions and, and we do it both ways, we have, we send them out sometimes, uh, because that individual has, and some won't, won't respond by phone, we can't get hold of them. So we always try that phone and then if we can't, we just have a phone to call. We're seeing a lot more of that.
If we were to get to submit two or three questions, I would imagine that somebody would be assuming that, like, he might not come up with this. Why don't we try to do that? And then, is there, what would you like to have questions?
No.
Just have to you?
No. But, but I think you can do that.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I think every week is not too, is not too...
No, yeah, but you can do that next week.
Next week. Is that, I mean, it's nothing that has to go back for a meeting, but I'll just compile a little bit of time, um, prior to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine. So, I just mentioned, we're going to, sorry, references and that letter of recommendation.
And then, I like your idea, one written letter of recommendation and then the, um, two calls, two references.
Professional references or just...
Just references.
Professional, not judge, maybe?
And, and the judges for us to...
Well, the judges could be professional.
Judges are already on here.
Right.
That's why I say, that's why I say...
We would disqualify anybody that has to, which is...
All right, okay.
Right. So just two professional letter of recommendation.
Okay, then I just want to roll out, okay?
Yeah.
So, good, good. Anything else about the supplemental requirements, the questions or the process, if you want us to approve this supplemental requirements, and also those screening measures?
Or, or even, we have to have discussion of it to see who you want to use it. So, there is a legal writing sample, did you want to keep that? On there, they did submit it last time.
Yes, yes.
Um, there was also a copy of the judge's decision for a case, this is new this, this time. Did you get a request to present that?
I asked for this, I want to know, um, we just know that the odds are that at some point we're going to not prevail, you know, in a case. I look for a couple of attorneys a long time ago that I, they told me that, remember on every, every case that goes to court, there's a prevailing attorney that one will win, and sometimes you can't bet in advance with the rules. So I want to know instead more the process you've been, what road they've been now that, because it's just a, a factor, I guess, so.
I'm fine with supplemental requirements, um, I know in the bar, we also provided this supplemental requirements for some of the big questions as well. Um, I know I provided to you some just...
All three supervisors did individually, and I knew for really...
So, three, thank you.
So it's fairly, I mean, and there's a lot of questions, it's going to take a bit of time, but whatever you want to gather. Um, the process, too, that we do part of that reference check, we need to, um, and by the, so I do get a background reason for, um, it is an appointment, not elections, we do, at least in the past, the board has been to that, we have to, uh, more.
I think that's appropriate, I remember, uh, my back to, um, the appointment process, we went prior, headed into the twenty sixteen election, um, after Paul Tiede. And one of the questions I think you and I, you were asked, I was in your presentation, you weren't in mine, but the three, uh, that asked at that time, we were asked, is there anything in your background that would cause concern around your, I think that was, yeah. And so, I don't know, the thing ran a background check, and they relied upon each of us who were applying for the appointment to go ahead and pass.
It's supposed to be a background check?
Yeah. Now, I got a person kept with a question myself.
I ran a little bit and see if they...
Yeah.
Now, there's, there would be a law license, I mean, you're, you're...
I agree.
Like, there wouldn't be anything, but we did, when they appointed Jessica back in two thousand sixteen, we did have a background check.
Okay. And she ever... So. I have a question after this, you mentioned about the CV that we need to list that separately?
We just put it on the posting and then they have to attach it.
Oh, thank you. I was going to say, you know, we definitely...
The, the posting has the requirements, what needs to be submitted with the application. There are certain things that we can require, we can, they can't submit this application without attaching something to the cover letter of the case. Now, whether they attach a cover letter or not, I mean, they have to, there are requirements that, that we can settle to make sure you get the documents you want to receive. Because we just did resume, but since the CD's considered separate, that is, that cover letter resume, can we take their whole time here?
Okay. Do you need a motion or just a sense of the law of office?
Not only just a, a, a permit?
I think that we approve, uh, the supplemental requirements and the supplemental questions as presented and attached to our agenda yesterday, as of yesterday.
With the clarification, right?
Okay, was it clarification on there?
We had the matrix page down, so?
No, I'd like to discuss that, so we can comment.
Certainly, yeah. In further discussion, Olson?
Um, I'm working on it. Okay, and the last item, um, that was used back in two thousand sixteen was a applicant's screening matrix. It's completely up to the board, where you want a tool to kind of go through and compare applicants, if you want to score them, we just want something to kind of keep track of their qualifications, everything's up, that's completely up to the board. Um, you don't have to have anything that says they get points and the individual with most points is going to be a point, and that really has to be your personal decision of who you want. And there might be other factors, other things on this matrix that you want to take into consideration, so. Um, I did update a little bit of what we choose, but it is completely covered, it's a screen. Yeah, because, I mean, sometimes it's easier with the tool, if you've got lots of applicants and kind of sorts things out. Um, I have no indication of how many, um, in the wildness, or...
Um, I sat in the audience when that, we went to, at the end of two thousand sixteen, uh, not gave it a look. And, um, one of the things that I felt on this matrix is that the matrix is pretty easy to wear it to one particular applicant, to that, and not quite sure how, but developed, created, you know, I think they wear these various points, and how many, and three years seem to be sufficient, one over the other, so I, that was my impression sitting out in the audience, that it was tailored toward one particular applicant. And, um, so I, I would hesitate to officially use any application screening matrix, because it might give members of the public or applicants the impression that, um, we're going to stick to it, this is going to be a primary determining factor. And for me, the determining factor, primary determining factor is really the answer to those questions and presentations. Um, I would hope that, that our constituents would trust us, that we would not be appointing that for someone who's brand new, with no experience in, in a couple of these areas. Um, but I don't put the same weight on, especially like in the mental health subjects, and with, in the hearing, or the Chinese areas, um, I'm much more interested in having experience representing an government entity, and much more interested in experience with, uh, having criminal law litigation, and, you know, that, and those are the things that this office has, where the county attorney comes forward, we rely upon the county attorney, the public relies upon the county attorney for those staff, and the government relies upon it. And, um, we do have a large staff, county attorney's office, and there are several attorneys who are, have, have a decade experience in these others, now, maybe they'll be applied also, but I just really, um, am reluctant, uh, to officially use this screening matrix. I certainly would track, but that's my opinion.
I have somewhat of a different opinion, because all, even though there's a couple of things that you might see, or public might see, the county attorney's office does, all of these things are done by somebody in the county attorney's office. And even if you've got somebody on staff who's got X number of years, Y number of years in one of these, they can retire and you can end up with a random person, a random attorney in a position. So I don't know that you're going to have a final applicant or a decision, that, you know, somebody's going to have all of this, but as much as the, of the experience I should get, I think, I will agree, this is not set up to say whoever gets the highest score wins, but what I think it does is it helps focus our attention on these aspects that we might otherwise not see, because they're not what you see in the paper every day, or they're not what we see as supervisors, which is, so. So I'm, I'm, I'm for using it, you know, understanding that it is not a, the highest score wins, but it focuses our attention on whether or not people have it.
So I was just like saying, I think I like to use the matrix when I'm interviewing people, but I do it more as, I mean, I've done various ways, some of them is to, for scoring points, and some of them is used in, is just to keep track, be more of a checklist, but, okay, yeah, but they do have experience in, uh, mental health, or China, or criminal, or wherever. I'm not as concerned about, you know, that they get two points or five points or how many years they've done it, it's just, okay, I'm just going to check it off. It is a lot of difficulty through their resume, um, except, you know, it's kind of where, where did they, where did they put that? So for me, um, that's just my, I like to, it's just, it's kind of that checklist, and it's just the easier thing for me to do, um, just follow one, that, like, another candidate. And if, yeah, if they got out of the ten, it's not something, again, that I would use as a determining factor, because I think this is, um, a different, um, it is appointing for an official, uh, position, but that's, I'm, I...
What if you took the score and off?
I can do that, and actually I can just, you know, free the people, get self-sretching, and kind of adapt it to their needs, like, how you want to. But you don't have to have the same, because you may, lawyers may value civil experience more than, you know, the experience they have of mental health and substance abuse, and that's, that's each individual supervisor's, um, choice, but I, I can sure just send you a template and you can, or I can take this one off, and then you could just document any to about this individual, and that's twenty-three years of criminal law litigation as well as ten, just to kind of try, I mean, you're going to want to track it somehow, and the tool will give you, I mean, at least, so you're comparing apples to apples on the checklist.
I think taking the score on, if, um, you check this from the floor, and if you were going to do it, and then you...
Sure.
I think it's really important, because otherwise, what you can do, sometimes you can get swayed by a personal presentation, and somebody's a very good speaker, and you forget that, oh, look, they're going to have this or that, so I think you really, you really want something to keep you focused on, on what we have in our position.
I like that, I, I, I like that, because I was going to use it for notes. Absolutely. But, yeah, understanding for this appointment, you don't need to be a registered historic county, and how a lot of licenses, the two, I mean, there are, those are the two very, they have to have. Everything else is based on what you pre-want, the terms, the qualifications.
And those, I use, you know, that, or two, is do they submit all of their government documents, and that's what I see, like, that, they, they did, you know, submit two references and one letter, and, you know, they didn't overlook something else, which is...
They're touching the detail.
Thank you. So, um, Julie, I would entertain the motions, we put the applicants screening matrix, the score on there.
I do, I, I need that motion.
I was like, that motion? Olson?
I'm, I'm working on it.
Thank you. Anything else, Melissa, that we don't think about? The posting will go live tomorrow, and we'll get that, I'll get that, uh, taken for the secondary, um, we will come out on the website, I'll get it out to the County Attorneys Association, posted up there.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for your good, fast work on this, and particularly for getting the timeline to the point where we don't have to, we may not have to consider making that act, like, for actual purposes. I think that was going to be awkward, we, you know, weren't able to get somebody, you know, I mean, if we need to do that, we can, but... mean, if we need to do that, we can, but this makes it possible for us to appoint somebody right immediately after county attorney rounds, the resignations, and I think that's, I think that's, yeah. Thanks very much, everybody, for the discussion. Do you need to do a little poll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, Austin.
Hi.
And I'm working on it. She is, she is. Okay, moving on. Apartment 34, 2 more, planning to go down on that train.
Morning.
Okay, this is the fourth quarter, third quarter from the planning of the government department, or the, let me see, I'm done. First thing that we usually show is the zoning permits, and what you see is the totals for the fourth quarter of the last five years, and you see that we're down six permits total from 2018, we're down four from 2017. A high point, though, to point out is that we actually had more same family dwelling permits for the last four years. Two of those are mobile homes in A-1 district, created by a site mobile home for care of a family member, usually existing building properties, we had two of those. And then if you look at the total, we have 35 dwelling, same family dwelling permits. Now, the total, 132 for 2019 compared to 53 same family dwelling permits, the total of 150. Valuation is up, we had a couple of policies, we had one of the same family dwelling permits that we had this last quarter was over 600,000 in value, and we get that contributed to the increase from previous quarter. Next thing is the distribution map. Young dots represent single family dwellings, and we see a number of those on the north side, the south side of Ames, but they're also distributed east of Huxley, around Cambridge area, as well as Cobal. The lighter yellow represents same family additions, and we see a few of those between Ames and Huxley and Cambridge. And then the blue represents accessory structure, we see a few of those east of, east of Vino West. Typical, typically what we see is a lot of growth in the west quarter, the west corner, but we do have distribution throughout the central part of the county, which is also in the region. Development cases, we were down. I think we indicated at the joint meeting that we had the planning zoning commission that our numbers were down, but we also received some applications late in November, December. So total for that quarter, we had five, two of those were condition lease permits, two were subdivisions, and one was a variance request, which is down from 13 that we had the fourth quarter of 2018. But again, I'll just jump to our current cases, which is the fourth item down. I'll touch on a big fat before. We've got a conditional use permit that we're nearing, showing kind of out of control, and closing a building for keeping a brush out temporarily that they take on, to be located in the southwest portion of the property, that's going to be before the planning zoning commission, and then on to the board adjustment on the 15th. The Valley Development Country Club, it was came about, they requested to build an accessory structure for storing equipment, and through our review, we learned that the status of the country club is considered a non-fully used. It started in 1974, it's a permitted use in A-1 district, and somebody had a permit for a clubhouse, the golf course for a dam that was constructed, but then in the late seventies, there was a change that was made, making it a conditional use permit item for golf courses. So we're taking them through a process, which is the conditional use permit process, for this building that they're requesting. There's a few buildings that were constructed during that time period, and now that there's one record of the permits, they're also addressing that. And a couple of the buildings that they constructed, they're required to apply for that. Would have been met, setup requirements had been applied for the zone at the time we constructed it. How they, you know, they're not even on the site. So this is something.
Apply your previous requirements.
We can't apply your previous.
We cannot do that. It's amazing how often we go back to review of the interview, you know, to get that understanding coming back. You always are required to follow the current standards when you receive a permit. So that's going to be a conditional use permit, and then ultimately variance request for two existing dwellings. Martin Marietta is requesting a conditional use permit modification that proposes to do some drilling on the north side of their site. They're trying to do some, I guess, what I would call backfilling of materials, like small material that they can't sell in the market, and so with their equipment, they can't, they can't, they can no longer add to these piles that they're working on, so they're requesting to do drilling. And then they also have a trailer that they hold behind a truck that they use for first responding to a disaster, or if there's issues on this mine, other mines in this area. And this is an off-site facility, and so that's a part of this, seeing a request that we're making. This was before the planning zoning commission last month, we got it early, so it'll be addressed. Rady is a Meyer subdivision, it's a request to define an existing plant, six of them will happen in two parcels. It's also before the planning is on commission, Rady, third. And St. Peter, the hall church, has a conditional use permit, which last year modified, so we see the blessing to add on to their party area.
Sounds like St. Peter's, who also had been on two years ago.
Five hundred thousand, you know, like.
Yeah, I mean, we've got two years.
They're adding to this. So that's a conditional use permit request. I just noted that I participated with other staff and other outside individuals on the housing assessment, consulting committee, which is an interesting rewarding process. I think that we made a recommendation on three strong candidates that had, I think, really good experience with the information that they're requesting, and had strong employees with experience. And I mentioned the appeals process, we had over 190 appeals on the 2020 census, probably we received support in all 190 of us. And then we just noted that we had six corporate research requests, and we had six exceptional reviews in the future. Complaints, these are probably the most active that we have. When we first started, there was a lot of debris and recycling materials. Mr. Ingram's property just visited there Monday of this week, and he has just about completed the rule of all the items. When he showed up on Monday, there was a couple of trailers that he was getting ready to take to a facility in Marshalltown, but he's not completed yet. So continuing to work with him, acquisition typically tends to be, we continue to work with, probably there's applicants who show progress during this process. Mr. Howe is, has a property east of the city of Cali, and he continues to clean up, provides us with receipts from like Bunsan, Asian, and different places he is taking his recycling material, most of it is metal, which are. And then court cases, rescue mobile home park, regular full load back hearing, Marcus and I did a review, you know, this additional cleanup that they take in place. The only items that were left were staffs of the blocks that they had used to set the mobile homes. All the vehicles, the semis, the trailers were gone, a lot of the piles were gone. The only debris bundle that existed is located where Mr. Lima recalls his shop there in the northeast side of that site. And so there was an agreement reached that he cleaned up everything, the metal, so we have this on our camera. I did report the board position on that. Mr. Wickers converted a same family dwelling, he goes east of Cali, into two additional units. There was an agreement reached on that one. Part of his situation is he's meeting our definition of kind of definition of family, which is people by marriage, by blood, plus two individuals who are not connected that way, who be a part of the family. So there was an agreement reached that he removed the appliances and the two additional units he had converted, garage, and quarters, and base. But this is something that we mentioned at the joint meeting, that we're giving his interest of homeownership, when he was wanting to, wanting the county, our staff to explore, you know, what other jurisdictions are doing with your, are to same family law, or what that really means. We already have on our work program, the exploration that we're going to do with accessory structures. The previous chair provides, maybe she asked us to look at all the possible uses for, you know, existing accessory structures, and like, could be done with new accessory structures, which could include potentially housing. There are other jurisdictions outside of Iowa I know that have preferences that have been adopted by local jurisdictions, passed on through state statutes. So this is something that we're really excited about looking at, before we do this, for supervisors. So it includes some information on who, what it means to have a same family club. It's not a comp for people to have, you know, back in place, or to have back in place, or like a kitchenette or something. So this is something that, I think it's time to send me some contact and, you know, this is.
Jerry, did you happen to follow the recent election of the city council that won that key, that's one who's now, it's sworn into office, was looking, wants the city to also look at accessory housing, conversion of garages and above garages, et cetera, as a way of looking for affordable housing alternatives? So you want to check it? Maybe you just want to touch base with the city as that meeting's. Right now, it's just, it was.
Here go mobile home park, they were required to get down to 34 total of maximum mobile homes by the first August. That property, though, has been sold, and, well, there was an offer made, and we have been contacted, our department's been contacted to ask some questions with regard to legislation that was passed. Last session, dealing with not confirming mobile home parks, and we had the amount to exchange existing for other units, and so we were submitting to the current property owner and being able to, who, to this, so.
Do we have a minimum size? I know the issue that we asked about has to do with trading out all the mobile homes and the most comparable trade for a newer one, else it's the larger. But do we have a minimum size then about how, about companies are funded?
I think that's going to rest in our districts, where it's actually a zone. With these, where it's not conforming years, the challenge is interpreting, you know, about dissection and what the intent is.
Is the zone, or is it a, or a?
We're talking about.
Trying to organize the zone, that's what the issue was. Sometimes.
Well, you can get, you can do RVs, you can request RVs, through like a conditional use permit under all evidence. Of like legal non-conforming, we think the intent is similar to similar, we're going to ask, you know, does that, would we allow or support a zone to be issued to replace single wide or whatever, 15 or 15 with a double wide that's twice the width, and we don't think that that's, you know, the legislation that's passed, so we have responded to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's something that is going to come, so the charge now is to get down to the number, and they had some questions about, which they were not hearing.
I would, I would like to see that, when they mail that, and send that scam.
And then, you mentioned that Perkins B and B is the McCate are, there's the appeals, I think that we heard from our attorneys that we are to hear decisions on the night when the claimer, the American appeals, so we're going to, and more, of course, decisions.
Great, you read this line, the ongoing complaint, last minute, second, is straight, just sort of, or a.
Ball. Yeah, that, it's a small personal, 170 stop of a county, did an OSA violation, did a rain response, citation, which is a hard to respond to a judge. And so we got an mobile home, there's appliances. A lot back, we heard from the property, that other people have done things there, but this, these things have not been, so we're in that section.
Is there some particular special feature of the property that the traps been done given by?
Probably being able to see that there's stuff there.
Okay.
So imagine, you know, there was, there was a land there, there was a mortar, a wire close to the light, and I think that they, you know, those appliances, bikes, metal plastics, this stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the work program, I'm not planning on going through it in detail, we went through it at the joint meeting. We've got 25 items, 11 we plan, or 12 we plan to address during the first year, which will take us through, half of those will be to be completed by the end of February, and then renumbered by the end of April. Ames are in French plan, we're going to have a resolution for the board, hopefully by the end of January, to address the interest that the county has, and continue extending the 28 grand of Ames to go, and the interest in working on policy improvements to the agreement, so we'll have that before the end. But we're working on scheduling, there's a lot of things that come. But we're working on scheduling, there's a lot of things to cover in 2020, very excited about it. And so we've been spending the last few meetings exactly as both of them were first scheduled. Sorry. Go back if you have any questions.
Mr. Irvin's plan to have that resolution stand out, where the names twenty forty go on. And I know they're having, tonight they're having an input session on that, and then finally on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that those are coming.
Probably Tuesday, they may start making decisions. I was going to ask if we all three could have another meeting elsewhere next Tuesday. Are you planning on attending that council meeting?
I was planning on attending tonight to observe, to observe the input, for some of those. Are you asking about next week's?
Yeah.
If you're concerned.
If that works in your schedule, that might be a good thing to have.
Because with the aims are infringed, the agreement that we have, we're on speakers in July, and we'll find out if you have any other questions.
Yeah. That my dad, oh, Harry's, you know, to the partners.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Comment on this? Anybody that needs to suggest the next? Um, yes. Okay, all right. So I was wondering if either of you had talked to the little woman who was born to the nineteenth, the Ains Story, Nineteenth Amendment Commemorative Committee about a proclamation that we would pass declaring twenty twenty as the year of the Nineteenth Amendment?
If you know what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. I don't remember. All right, so then, so that's the one that goes to my.
Then we're going to put a form number two, comments from the public on this on the agenda. Board may not take any action on the comments because in accordance, the opening slot may be still in the future. So I open the bullet form. Can anybody who want to make any comments, please come to my phone. Same number you're moving to the microphone, close to the bullet form. Names who have views on assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from supervisors.
Supervisors, Mr. Monster.
Sure. So yesterday I attended the main accessory meeting, I'd asked some information to my work review in regards to their budget proposal and any variety narrative. So if you have any question from that. Dawn Tank also said, do you have any questions or big concerns that if you would email ahead of time to make your questions? Whether they can be prepared to respond to versus going to the next meeting with the large group and not being prepared to respond, just to her Monday. They did set the meeting for January, or the twenty-eighth, is that our next group? Since none of us knew about it, and we don't have at least two people that turn out, so that meeting January twenty eighth at five thirty PM, or the, this will probably go prior to prepare for a meeting. Last night, I partook in the second of my, I think, six session series of the public health leadership, that I am doing. Last night was on local boards, kind of local governments, and the difference between kind of advisory and capacity ones, and the ones that have more policy authority. So it's a very, very interesting, so I love doing it from out to two soon, so you can see the whole presentation at a time. And I actually, I drop the presentation, so I can take copies notes along the way. So that's, that's what's on there. Terms of my schedule this week, right, we've got budget workshops, very much with the rest of the week. So that would keep being our key buzz, I would say, relatively pretty busy. I do have Thursday and ninth, I have a boost for a meeting. We're in the process of looking to hire new directors, director, and director, and the G O, who's a company person in place. Hired by the head of the town, so that won't overlap for training purposes, and that's something that I will be working on. I also have a big note that the D C A, which normally means second Friday, and I'm not sure if you can tell, but actually is Wednesday seventeen. I don't know if I said something too long, but I probably never had it, because many degree. Workshops are, which are, that all, or from housing, they go fifty to seventeen, for the rest, we're all not able to attend. That's going to be, so that's what's going to be on my agenda for.
Uh, I see, I attended a call, City Council last night, I have a little mirror, I show off from the haze there. The key things to come out of that, first of all, is they would like you, the Nada, and maybe Mike Cox, and who's chair of the conservation. Okay, okay, that's still the one. They would welcome you to come next month, requesting that you come to discuss, starting the discussion again, or bringing it back up, about us maybe looking into their sewer, so that we can run sewer from Avery, where it is parked. And.
Mike's talking?
Yes, Mike did talk to the mayor. Mike is telling, the man understands that from Mike, that Mike already has the money to do this with the project. And I said, well, maybe he's planning on spending it out, the conservation does have a couple of funds, you know, they have friends in conservation, and there's the DAPA money, there's about, as we heard in our budget update, there's about one point one or one point two million in that. I just explained to him, well, that it still has to go through process, okay, but that's, yeah, so on that. So I think that's why, and that's the way to come, because I explained to you, the person taking over. A couple of council members felt that when former supervisor, Randy Chitty had been talking to the Mike, because this has been a long process discussion, and the primary thing that had to happen before, really without any discussion of hooking up, was they had, they felt major leakage of their storage water system. And that was going a lot through the system, and the system couldn't handle anything more if we hooked up to utilities. And so apparently, a couple of the council members had been under the impression that we want to help them pay for even those research costs. And I told him that I've never heard that. I had heard that at one point, former supervisor, Chitty, was discussing with them about payment of a contribution in return for hooking up. I have heard the term, the dollar, two hundred thousand dollars, which was recently, what was basically ten percent of what their engineers were turning at my cost to replace the sewer and where they're in food. So I told them that I didn't feel that was anywhere on the table. And had, and had mentioned to former supervisor Sanders and I, only a pastime, we're never going to be formed or to actually, this kind of updated information. And that they should not be counted on that until they talk to you, and begin the process. Don't forget, you probably needed this. Yes, and you will be taking over for us. Okay? Yes.
Mike and I.
Great, so kind of do you get all the information on this?
The same.
Okay, so then also, then this week, in addition to spending all our time on budget, I am planning on going tonight to the Urban, oh, sorry, to the City Council, and City Council for the twenty forty plan to listen. I did go to the previous meeting where they began, where they forced the mayor's front roof were laid out, and even that meeting afterwards, where they weren't taking from the input, which pretty good at us at this point, I did know how good, made clear to the mayor, and to the council members, and to the state chamber, that I felt the suggestion for the east expansion was not as viable as if they went ahead and they decided to start building housing to the east of the interstate, that that did not seem as viable as the other.
That's personal opinion.
This was a personal opinion, I made a very clear to them at this point, it was just my personal opinion, because I did not feel, first of all, I was concerned by Pennsylvania, second, that I was concerned about that maybe that land wasn't going to be as free as they thought it would be, but of course, it's true. But I am going tonight, also, in the next two nights of the asset hearings, I'm going to go to listen to some very specific agency hearings that I'm interested in, that we're going to have follow-up with, or that are related to the housing or the hundred and five percent, I just want to listen to those presentations. I'm also, let's see what else is on display, I think on Thursday, there's the Ames Economic Development conditions, the annual economic update preview, that is at seven thirty in the morning. And there are also, that night is Ames, which is a civic, I think you all have heard additions to those. And.
Are you?
I can't believe I'm in with those four meetings. Okay. I think we need to assure that you two are on the same manning list. If you get any invitations, can you respond to them?
I can, I mean, if they won't come, okay, all right.
I think it's on the morning one.
Okay, because the morning one came via the, the chamber's weekly update also.
I thought, maybe I saw it actually, I have Facebook, it was there.
Okay, that might be where I saw the morning one. I haven't seen anything otherwise. Going back to the chamber, are you, are you two getting the weekly updates?
Not here, I'm getting.
Okay, I'll have to relook. Relook, because I had significant problems getting the weekly updates, and so it ended up, you know, has to do with the chamber, the U C's.
It has.
Okay, so wait a minute, but, okay, so then also, Friday morning, I'm at the A O C, executive. So that's all centered, clustered around the hearings. And then I do want to correct myself, I said, while discussing the county attorney, I said about the previous screening process and the matrix, that I'd been elected and had not been elected yet, since September, I believe that she was appointed. So I want to correct that. It wasn't the audience, my impressions, but I had to go back.
Okay, then.
Last week is, we wish a budget of sessions. So glad things on my calendar, I get the rights, I can call it back on. I have nothing else to do for, so I would like to do a motion for adjournment. Second, and I also.
I am.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting.